Uh-oh. I have a sunny ring is in the chambers. I'm going to bring this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order along with the successor agency and the Lawndale House and Authority to order. I'm going to ask the Secretary slash Clerk to give us the wrong call.
Secretary, whoa.
Yes, just turn these up.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Torres.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Mayor Protem Miles.
Here.
All present except Councilmember Cuevas at this time.
Thank you, madam. City Clerk slash Secretary. I say Secretary because you have the House and Authority and successor agency with you.
You're the boss, sir.
Well, you're the boss, but here we go. Okay, um, let's have our ceremonial portion. Let's have our prayers going to be led by George Magalini from Hope Chapel, pastor. But before that, we're going to have a pledge allegiance by Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem Torres.
Please stand. Face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council staff. Just a brief prayer and a scripture. The scripture I probably brought before, it's from Jeremiah 29:11. It is a favorite of mine and our church stands on it. And it's, um, God speaking through the prophet and he says, "Surely I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future. And that word prosper in the Hebrew is shalom, peace and well-being. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you that you have revealed your will and in spite of the world that we live in, Lord, we know that we can trust you for your peace and your well-being. Lord, we thank you for the city of Lawndale, the heart of the South Bay. Lord, we know that it is you who sustains it and you who have sustained it these many years. We thank you for every resident. Pray that you bless every family, every senior, every child. And Lord, we do thank you for those that you have raised up your agents to help us and to serve us and to protect us. We thank you for our Sheriff's Department and Fire Department. Pray that you bless and protect them as they protect us. We want to commit this meeting to you. Ask you to dispense your wisdom upon your servants for your glory. I personally pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from LA County Fire Department. Sergeant is going to stand in. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. The captain couldn't make it tonight, so I have the honor of presenting to you again. Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm here to present the public safety report for May 20th through June 3rd. On May 21st, deputies responded to the area of 160th Street and Prairie Avenue regarding a call for service of a two-vehicle traffic collision. During the investigation, deputies discovered one of the drivers had a firearm that was readily accessible in the interior of the vehicle and the firearm was unregistered. The driver was arrested for various weapons violations. On May 21st, at approximately 8:45 PM, deputies were patrolling the area of Artesia Boulevard and Gravelli Avenue when they observed a reported stolen vehicle driving directly in front of them. The deputies attempted to stop the vehicle, but the driver failed to yield and a vehicle pursuit ensued. The pursuit terminated when the driver leapt from the moving sedan and attempted to run. He was arrested a short time later and he was booked on various vehicle code violations. Those were felonies. Uh, I'd like to talk about a recent observation, a cert, uh, operation, excuse me. A search warrant was executed on a commercial location of the 4,500 block of Artesia Boulevard on May 30th. The search warrant was a culmination of the investigation by the Lawndale Special Assignment deputies Perez and Abara and detectives with the Operation Safe Streets Bureau. The warrant service prompted a large law enforcement response, which included detectives from Compton Station, Industry Station, South Los Angeles Station, as well as the Summer Crime Enforcement Team. There were total of 10 arrests for illegal gambling and one arrest for a weapon violation, which was a firearm. Approximately 30 citations were issued during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations, including failure to stop at a stop sign, red lights, and for speeding. Special attention was given to 160th Street and Freeman Avenue where there were reports of vehicles not stopping for stop signs and various cross streets along 147th Street. And I'd like to invite everybody to the next Neighborhood Watch meeting, which is going to be held in this room right here. They held Hoffman Community Center, June 18th at 7:00 PM. And, uh, everybody's invited to attend. This concludes my report and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any, um, questions of the Sergeant's, um, report?
No questions, just comments.
Yes, ma'am.
First off, I would like to say to our SAO officers Perez and Abara, if you could pass on, I am so proud of that type of work and cleaning up some of that stuff in our city. And I appreciate the fact that they went out and took care of that and got 10, possibly 11 people off of our streets. That meant us no, no good. And also I will be here too with Neighborhood Watch. I'm really excited and I hope that all the residents, um, that were here last time invite two or three of their neighbors so that we can even get a larger crowd than what we did last time. So I look forward to it. It's how we're going to get things done.
Thank you for that report, sir. Thank you. Now let's hear from the LA County Fire Department with the public safety update. Let's welcome Acting Assistant Fire Chief Brian Kane. How are you, sir?
Very good, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Public safety report for the city of Lawndale for May from the Fire Department, Los Angeles County, of course. 221 total responses. Uh, there was four fires within the area. Nothing very significant. One vehicle fire, a dumpster fire, and two rubbish fires. There was 146 EMS responses, 88 of which required ALS interventions by our paramedics. There was eight responses with our advanced practitioner unit within the city of Lawndale, so those numbers are holding strong. And the pancake breakfast at Fire Station 21 was very well attended, went off without a hitch, and it was, it was a good time had by all. And that is the end of my report.
Okay, any questions of Fire Department?
Again, I'll just make a comment.
Yeah, one more comment. Yes, ma'am. I mean, not just one more, but you.
Thank you for always giving us these numbers. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the pancake breakfast. I was able to attend and I just want to tell you a great big thank you. That was just a really nice community event and it was nice to see the neighbors all come out, so I'm proud of our Station 21. We're pretty, pretty important over there, so thank you.
Thank you much, very much for that. It was a good time had by all. I was there myself as you, as I saw you there.
Yes.
And looking forward to it next year.
I can't wait.
I want to thank you also, um, for being the acting, how long have you been acting? Was you acting chief the last time we saw you?
Since April.
Okay. Okay, acting, congratulations on, on that. And thank you for your participation in our second annual Pancakes with the Mayor. It went out without a hitch. Thanks to your staff and wonderful firefighters at, um, Fire Department and local 10, 14. Thank you for the partnership and I just thank you guys for being there. As you said, a good time was had by all.
Yes, it was.
Including me.
Yes.
But thank you for all you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving our, um, agenda right along, we have a couple of presentations. We've got two presentations tonight. First presentation, we're going to proclaim American Public Works Associations in the California, excuse me, in the Canada Public Works Association, um, going to proclaim Public Works Week. And here's a presentation for the National Public Works Week. And I see, yes, we want to call you up. We have you in script, but come on up. National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024. And this is our honor every year to recognize, um, the great men and women at the Public Works Department, um, by, um, presenting this, um, resolution. Um, the National Public Works Week is a celebration of tens of thousands of men and women in North America who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. And this year marks the 64th year of the National Public Works Week. In recognition of Public Works Week, the city of Lawndale recognized the dedication and skill set of the Public Works Department. From maintenance, streets, and ground workers, engineers, inspectors, analysts, administrators, support staff, and management, each of them played a central role in the day-to-day operations of the city. Therefore, we'd like to invite our Public Works Director, I see, that's Grace DePodio, to the podium to receive this proclamation as we recognize the National Public Works Week and proclaim, as we recognize National Public Works Week and recognize the employees who make the department what it is, what they do, something like that. On behalf of the city of Lawndale, we hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as a National Public Works Week. And in doing so, we encourage the community to recognize the contributions made by our Public Works employees to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life for the residents of the city of Lawndale. And this is proclaimed the third day of June, 2024. And we would join you. DePodio will take a picture and we have you to say a few words. Two words. Yeah, if you want to invite your staff, that's fine.
Of course, before I do that, thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, you know, as you know, every year, uh, American Public Works Association does this. And, um, you know, for council's information, um, this year, this coming Wednesday, we're going to have an open house at the Public Works location from, uh, from 11 o'clock to 2:00 PM. The general public, the council, the employees, they all have been invited, you know, to showcase our equipment, you know, some information, you know, who to call in case of any information or services. Uh, and we will also have a hot dog lunch, you know, for everybody. Uh, and that has been sponsored, uh, you know, from 12 to 1:00. And we'll be happy to have everyone over there, you know, joining us and seeing what we do and what we have. And with your permission, I'm going to invite two of the employee, not thousands of men and women, but only two in, uh, in the city of Lawndale to join me for a group picture with the council.
Love it.
Thank you for all you do over there. I know, I enjoy it.
We truly enjoy it. Thank you so much.
No, we didn't stay, we didn't stay at, we didn't stay at the spa. No, the hot dog on the stick.
Yeah.
Okay, our next presentation is a presentation by Southern California Gas Company. Gabriela Medina, Public Works, Public Affairs Manager from SoCal Gas would give a presentation.
Hi, yes, good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Protem, members of the city council and staff. My name is Gabby Medina and I am your Public Affairs Manager on behalf of SoCal Gas. Um, I recently joined the company about five months ago. Um, and I join you, uh, join SoCal Gas from the city of Los Angeles, in which I served, um, under the capacity of council members Tracy Park for the last year and prior to that, council member Joe Buscaino. So I'm definitely very familiar with, uh, city governance and I thank you all for your service, um, each and every day. Um, behalf of SoCal Gas, we are going around, um, the cities that we serve, all 210 of them, and, uh, speaking about our 2045 aspire goals. Um, our goals are focused mostly around, um, the state's initiative to decarbonize the state of California by 2045. And SoCal Gas is definitely on the front line of that conversation. And so we have a small presentation for you today. Uh, feel free to, um, ask me, ask me any questions if you want at the end or in between the presentation. Um, I won't mind. So, as I mentioned, we're advancing California's clean energy transition. I think I have this right. There we go. Nope. Okay. Um, SoCal Gas has been, uh, serving and, uh, serving for the past 150 years. Uh, we are the largest, uh, utility, uh, provider of natural gas in the nation with over, uh, a coverage area of about 24,000 square miles, anywhere from, uh, Central California all the way south to the border. Uh, we have about 21 million customers and that's both residential, commercial, also industrial. This clicker is gonna, okay, there we go. So some of the initiatives that, uh, SoCal Gas is in line with, um, are, I would say the most important Senate bill was Senate Bill 100, um, chartered by DeLeon, which sets the goal to, uh, 2045 to have, uh, zero emissions throughout the state of California. These are some of the legislations that led to our initiatives. Um, and, uh, I'm not going to go into detail into all of them. Um, ultimately, the goal is to decarbonize by 2045. Um, and SoCal Gas has been, um, at the table with our legislatures, with, uh, the California Public Utilities Commission, and we are committed, uh, to completing that goal in partnership with, uh, our state legislator. So California, um, obviously we have a very broad portfolio of diverse energy solutions. Uh, we know that, um, we have been, uh, as, as a state, we are always almost first to sign up for either wind, solar, or any type of, um, green initiatives, uh, that meet our decarbonization goals. However, um, seeing that we have very hard industry here in the state of California and our economy definitely depends on it, um, such as the ports and the airport, we understand that, um, some of these sectors are going to be very difficult to electrify and to run 100% on electricity. Therefore, we are wanting to ensure that we have, uh, fuel systems that are also green, that are good for the environment, and are able to power some of these, um, assets. And hydrogen is one, um, is the way that we would like to do that. Um, so not only in the state of California are we seeing a big move towards hydrogen, but most recently under the Biden administration, um, there was a very, having left to allocate $7 billion in hydrogen hubs throughout the nation, California was one of them. And it is, um, the initiative is called Arches. That is, um, a consortium of about 50 organizations, public and private, um, that have teamed up to identify individuals that will be producing hydrogen, individuals that will be transporting hydrogen, that will be us, and, um, those that will be, um, accepting the hydrogen to power their sources, such as, um, aviation. Um, obviously, uh, the trucking industry is very big, particularly here, um, in Southern California. Other heavy industrial uses, um, and, uh, such as like the ports of LA and the ports of Long Beach. So we believe in a very diverse portfolio of clean fuels. Uh, clean hydrogen is one of them. Obviously renewable natural, um, gas, um, biofuels, and then carbon management. So these are all ways by which we can meet our 2045 goals. SoCal Gas has been on a very strategic journey to reach our 2045 goals. Um, it started, um, a couple of years ago, uh, by, one is agreeing with the state of California that we would do this. Um, then we, uh, started to, uh, work with our engineers and work with our partners, uh, throughout California to identify, uh, ways that we could do this. Um, in 2022, we applied to the California Public Utilities Commission, uh, to be the transporter of hydrogen. And that initiative for us would be Angelus Link. Uh, so just keep in mind that those are two separate projects. Arches is the state initiative. Um, it is the entire portfolio of hydrogen for California, specifically the SoCal Gas project, which is a pipeline dedicated for hydrogen, is called Angelus Link. A few other projects that you will hear, um, that are initiated by SoCal Gas, um, is we have a hydrogen pilot in Orange Cove, um, just at the border, um, of our northern, um, district. And that is, um, a pilot that is injecting hydrogen up to 5% to an existing pipeline, uh, to power 10,000 homes. We also have another initiative with UCI, um, and that one is to pilot, um, a 5% to 20% of hydrogen blending into the existing natural gas pipeline, uh, to power their, um, student union. Um, so these have all been approved by the California Public Utilities Commission. And SoCal Gas is very proud and, uh, very excited, uh, to have been selected, um, to lead this, these pilot initiatives here in California. Um, we are, in a sense, uh, we're both piloting, um, hydrogen blending as well as advocating for a pure hydrogen pipeline under Angelus Link. So we're always, obviously, very committed to sustainability. Um, we know that we have to transition to clean energy and we are definitely, uh, committed to doing that. We want to protect the climate and improve air quality in our communities. Um, and obviously, we want to increase, excuse me, increase clean energy access and affordability for all of our customers. And we're advancing a diverse and equitable and inclusive culture and, um, always achieving this through world-class safety. So the Clean Renewable Hydrogen Pipeline System, um, as I mentioned to you, this is, um, currently, uh, in 2022, the CPUC granted us the opportunity to start the, um, advocacy and engagement around this. Uh, so we have, uh, two stakeholder groups. Uh, one is comprised of a more technical body of individuals, um, that represent, uh, environmentalist group, engineering groups, um, and a few others to, uh, talk about if a pipeline, if a dedicated hydrogen pipeline was created, um, what would that look like? Where would it, where would it be? Um, where would it travel through in terms of California? And where would it go? And then our other stakeholder group is about 50 organizations, ranging from community-based organizations throughout the state of California, that are guiding the conversation of how this project should happen to ensure that equity, access, and environmental justice is always at the forefront of our conversation. So we're meeting with environmental groups, nonprofit groups, um, that are less about the technical and more about ensuring that we as a company, uh, work collaboratively with these individuals and ensure that, um, the community benefits are built into, um, the actual plan itself. Um, so mostly projects usually that are developed, such as this one, that usually happens after they're approved. Uh, this time, we're doing things a little bit different. We're having people at the table, having those conversations, uh, beforehand. So just as we're wrapping phase one of that stakeholder engagement, um, which, uh, took place over the last year, we are going into phase two, um, having more public discussions with entities such as yourselves to bring you into the conversation and, um, and open that conversation of hydrogen. And hopefully, after today's meeting, um, have your excitement to come and visit our Hydrogen Home in Downey, where we are, um, it's the only hydrogen home, um, in, uh, in the entire nation, really. And so, uh, we're doing great work there and, um, it's a more physical form of showing you, um, what SoCal Gas is doing around its work. So the hydrogen, um, microgrid, as I mentioned, is, um, is in Downey. Um, it is completely, uh, clean renewable energy, so pretty much we have solar panels, the energy that we receive from the solar panels. Um, we then, uh, run it through, um, an electrolyzer, which separates the two molecules, oxygen as well as hydrogen. We release the hy, the oxygen back into, um, into the air and we capture that hydrogen and we store it to power the entire home. And so, um, we are doing this, um, in Downey. We actually recently, um, just had, um, our deans as well as administrators of all the community colleges and LACCD come out and witness it and, uh, working with them to ensure that we are developing the curriculum, developing, uh, the credentials and, um, the necessary, um, information so that our students can be prepared, uh, to enter this workforce, um, in the coming years. Again, I stand here inviting you all to come and, uh, see what our Hydrogen Home is about, have a conversation with our engineers, um, to see if there's, um, any interest of, of wanting to participate in any of the work that we're doing. The hydrogen blending demonstrations, um, hydrogen is not a new form of energy. Uh, many countries have, uh, really mastered their work around hydrogen. Um, uh, many countries in Europe as well as, uh, Canada has been one of them that is leading in the hydrogen world and blending as well. Um, research shows that we can blend up to 20% of hydrogen and put it back into our pipeline without compromising the integrity of our current pipeline. And so we are testing both in Orange Cove as well as UCI to see how well those work. And, um, if it is proven to be sustainable, then this is something that we can start doing in the coming years into our current pipeline that runs through 24,000 square miles. Um, and this will cost, um, absolutely, really nothing to the ratepayers, um, and it's because we're using the existing pipeline and, um, and we're using the existing pipeline and their appliances are not affected. Uh, we studied this, um, over the last couple of years at our Energy Resource Center, also in Downey, and we've tested hundreds of, um, appliances to ensure that they can withstand up to 20% of hydrogen blending into the pipeline. So we've received a number of recognitions and awards for our sustainability work, um, which we are sharing here and you can learn more about at the Hydrogen Home in Downey. And SoCal Gas, uh, we have the infrastructure and we have the expertise. When it comes to our workforce, we have over 8,000 individuals that are experienced, um, technologically skilled staff that are working on our pipelines each and every day, uh, probably with your Public Works, uh, Department to, um, issue permits, uh, do work on the public right-of-way, and always, always have safety in mind. Um, not just of our equipment and our infrastructure, but of our customers and our communities that we serve in. Uh, we're very proud that 73% of our workforce, um, are people of color, reflecting the diverse communities that we serve. And in terms of our infrastructure, it's over 1,000 miles of underground pipelines and four underground storage facilities that we also, um, manage. And so our goal is, uh, to utilize the existing staff and, uh, to an extent, the existing infrastructure, uh, to further advance our clean energy initiatives, whether it's through blending or through a completely new hydrogen dedicated pipeline. Uh, supporting our sustainable future through diversity, innovation, and collaboration. Um, so it just kind of tells, actually, I can't even read this one. I'm so sorry. But, um, ultimately, uh, when it comes to our workforce, we're very proud that we are one of the leading companies with, um, our, our employees staying with us for a very long time. Uh, when folks come to SoCal Gas, they, they stay and they retire from SoCal Gas. We offer incredible benefits for our employees. Um, we are incredibly giving as an organization. Uh, our philanthropic, uh, views are very open and diverse. We support students through scholarship initiatives, internships, and different programs. Um, and we have a community relations team that is intensely, um, aggressive when it comes to supporting, um, climate initiatives or, um, anything that supports our environment. We currently have a $40,000 grant open for nonprofit organizations that wish to apply. Um, and it's, it's called our Climate Champions Grant. Um, I can go ahead and share that to your office emails and if you'd like to, um, send it out in your newsletters, um, and we're accepting applications until the end of the month. And the ask is partnering with us to accelerate the clean energy transition. Um, we understand that hydrogen may not necessarily be a topic of conversation that is had every day and, 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 um, throughout our communities, and so we welcome you, uh, to further have that conversation with our staff, um, at the Hydrogen Home in Downey. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those now. Thank you.
Okay. He's going to turn the light back. Okay, first I want to thank you for that, um, that presentation. Um, let's see if there's any, um, questions or comments. I have a question, but.
I just have comments.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, you've had a busy month. Burst out in Indian Wells to meet with contract cities. And that Hydrogen Home, if anybody has been out to see this, is absolutely outstanding. This guy's sitting here on the right of me and I, we actually got to see it in an event and I'm blown away at how normal the house felt with utilizing this new, um, process for energy. I am disappointed, though. You didn't say anything about methane and the cows.
Oh, I know.
I almost brought my cow tonight for you.
Right, so we, one of our giveaways is a little cow, um, and it's, uh, we have, we have a partnership with 12 dairy farms in Central California. And we have tents over our cows and we capture the methane and that methane we inject back into our natural gas pipeline. It's about 7%. It's about seven percent of our natural gas production.
And that's just incredible. That just makes my nerdism happen, so thank you.
Yeah, we definitely pursue ideas and we try to be as sustainable and use every aspect of, you know, possibility out there, so thank you for that.
Well, welcome to Longdale and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? I just have a few questions. You mentioned the, at one point, you mentioned that there's no cost to the ratepayers. So we said that this system is fully built out, we won't, this won't be reflected in their.
For the blending.
For the blending.
The blending, currently, go ahead, sorry. Currently, the blending could be done without any change to our existing infrastructure or the appliances of, within their homes. When it comes to hydrogen, that report should be out soon and then we'll know what the costs are associated with it.
The cost to the ratepayers?
Just in general. So there were about twenty-one reports issued during the first phase of, of this project from environmental impacts to community impacts, cost, everything. And so once we review those papers, they will be accessible to the public on our website.
Okay, very good. Now, have you finished your stakeholder engagement portion?
The stakeholder engagement is ongoing, so as public affairs managers, and there's thirty-five of us, we are tasked with going before the cities that we represent, nonprofit organizations, different bodies of individuals that are involved in the community, from students to anyone, really, business community. When it comes to our stakeholder group that is solely dedicated to Angelus Link, they will continue on through every phase of the project.
So are those stakeholder groups, community organizations, is that list available? I would like to see.
Yeah, so all the information is online under our Angelus Link tab, so you can just Google SoCal Gas, Angelus Link, and every single copy of all the notes for the past meetings are on there, as well as the stakeholder list, who's involved, who's saying what, all that information is accessible to you.
Okay, last one, or two. How can I get more information about the scholarships that you, you make?
So also on our website, I will go ahead and send those to each of your offices respectively. And it's for high school students and college students as well.
Okay, very nice. And that would include maybe some information on the internship?
Yes, also on our website, mhm. Yeah, we actually just launched our internship program, it just started. We, I started getting introductory emails this week and last week as well from folks that are joining our team throughout the summer while they're, you know, back home from college and whatnot.
Are they paid internships?
Yes, yes, yeah. And from different levels, right? So from like planning, engineering, to in-the-field, technical permits, every section that you can think of, community relations, prom, sector, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to share that with the community, in particular, our youth advisory, if they fit the age requirements, but they may have older siblings that fit the requirements. Okay, I want to thank you for the presentation, that was very enlightful and thank you for that information, this is pretty intriguing.
And I'll keep you guys updated as we are rolling, are we, as we're closing phase one, we'll be able to have a report to bring back to the table in terms of how that meeting, how those meetings wrapped up and how we're moving into the next direction. Okay? Thank you, guys, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for scheduling.
Now, we're on our communications. We got a long speech, Ray, I gotta give before communications. So our communications, we have opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to Longdale City Council, the Successor Agency, or the Housing Authority, you may do so at this time, you don't have to wait for your name and your card, you simply come to the podium. When the first before you conclude, just simply come into the podium, start with your name, in about two and a half minutes, the, the clerk will give you the, well, she's got the timer, so you look at the timer and that gives you like the, the time to kind of start wrapping things, things up. And you have our first speaker.
I am Ray Haller, homeowner in southwest Longdale and honorable mayor and city council and staff. Thanks very much for this too-short microphone here for me to work, so I'll do the best I can. I'm going to talk about the sea line, green line extension status relating to the Metro Board of Directors' decision at their meeting on May twenty-third. First of all, thanks very much for funding the buses to take Longdale residents to the Board of Directors' meeting at Union Station. Thanks also for attending the meeting in person and speaking on behalf of Longdale. The turnout was really good, I think, by the, the city and, and, and all of you, thank you so much, that means a lot to me. Thanks also for funding our attorney and providing a letter updating Longdale's response to the draft EIR against emphasizing the requirement for all green line options to prepare a NEPA review. The motion approved by the Board of, Metro Board of Directors does not overtly require a NEPA review. The preamble to the motion to proceed, to complete the NEPA review says, it says, metro, quote, "Metro will need to pursue a variety of sources of funds, including new federal grants that may become available, and the project should be prepared to undergo further environmental analysis pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act NEPA at some point in time, which could be prepared at a later date once the SEQA process is completed," unquote. So that's what they think of our NEPA letter, which I hope to pound a, our city's point of view upon them as much as possible. Okay, so the motion approved gives the metro staff authority to proceed to complete the EIR process per SEQA for the hybrid row option and continue to study the Hawthorne Boulevard option and update cost estimates and funding plans for both options. Overall, I hope that the Board of Directors would explain their rationale for this decisions, but only three directors spoke and even they left me wanting for detailed rationale. Now, for those of us who've been going down in person for months and months and months, that was deeply, deeply disappointing, which we're left with not really knowing what they're thinking, how to perceive, what matters to them, what doesn't, and I find the ambiguity just, just, I'm, I'm, I'm just, see, I'm stumbling now, I'm not even sure what to say. So I guess we're gonna approach the, some ex, subject matter experts in how to speak to the Board of Directors and so don't be alarmed if you are consulted by myself or others for such advice. We look forward to having your help. Again, thanks for everything you've done for this residence of Longdale, for fair treatment of Longdale, for the green line extension, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any wishing to speak to this body?
Good evening, my name is Michelle Pino, I'm the manager over at Longdale Library. I just have a couple of announcements. We're excited to offer free in-person tutoring at Longdale Library this summer. Students in grades first to sixth can get tutoring in reading and math by professional tutors from June eighteenth through August eighth. Longdale Elementary School District and Longdale Library are working together to get students in the community the help they need. We would also like to invite our Longdale residents to join our summer celebration of reading and exploration by signing up for the Summer Discovery Program from June first through August eleventh. Read books, complete fun activities, earn badges, and be entered to win prizes. This summer, kids and teens eighteen and under can enjoy free lunch at the library from June eighteenth through August ninth during the hours of twelve and one, Tuesday through Friday. And lastly, I also wanted to invite you to join the largest book club in LA. From June first to July twenty-seventh, One Book One County is a community reading program that celebrates collaboration across the county. All library systems in LA County will be reading L.A. Weather by Maria Amparo Escandon. And that's it for me, thank you.
Hi, Deana, Longdale resident. I just want to give a quick shout-out to Public Works also. They are the backbone of the city and do an amazing job anytime you call on them. Everybody in the crews have always been so friendly and everything and very concerned in helping out. I just wanted to also add, with the pet fair coming up, I don't know, I'm sure it's too late, but maybe next year or something, there could be a little disclosure about how serious fox tails and stickers and weeds are for animals. It seems like people aren't taking care of that parkway, they're not taking care of their yards. You can drive around and see all the fox tails, they're nice and tall now. And again, is it just that we just send Public Works out just to mow the parkways down so you can get rid of the fox tails? It's, it's a shame, it's just, I don't know if these are rentals or just people just don't want to take care of their yards. I don't really understand that. But also, I noticed your wall of distinction thing, and this is the first time I kind of, I don't really, didn't really understand quite what you guys were looking for, but I have a question. Is a wall of distinction just for an individual or could it be a group? And the reason why I'm asking is, there is no more Longdale Women's Club, but there used to be. These women were incredible, my mom was in that and so was Charmaine Doty was actually the last one alive to, you know, that remained. But Ella was on it, Rosine Dries, my mom, there's a lot of other women from the past years ago that did a lot for the city, scholarships, food, donations, they would make crafts and all this stuff, they would have meetings, they used to have meetings at City Hall and then they started to have meetings at everybody's homes and everything. And I remember just growing up with all the women and their contribute to the city of Longdale, so I just didn't know if it was a single person or as a group, maybe next year. I sure would like to nominate the women of Longdale Women's Club, actually. And again, I don't have a whole lot of any more information either of the long list of the women that used to be on there, but there was a lot of good ladies on that group. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak to this body? Okay, CNN, we were closed, public comments, bring us the dice for, for comments, let's hear from Hoffman, Gordon.
Thank you for, to everyone that came out and spoke to us, just a few little comments. Of course, Michelle, thank you for keeping us informed as what's going on at the library and the, the fun things that we've got coming on our way for over the summer. Ray, I like you, was down there at that meeting and I'm as disappointed and speechless on a lot of things, on where my opinion is, I was disappointed completely that only three of them spoke. I thought that that was a sorry shame, considering so many of us took the time out of our lives to take a day off of work and everything else because it is something that is important to our community. And for them not to make comment or give us an idea of what they're thinking, I thought was sad as well. So I share you, I share that same feeling with you. Deana, this is the first, I'm thinking about it and of what you just said, yes, you're right, the Longdale Women's Club was pretty important group back in the day. And you know, several years ago, we revisited the ordinance on how to put somebody on the wall of, the honor wall that we just had for Memorial Day out there as a plaque. I'm wondering if maybe we can take a look at that ordinance and see if the Longdale Women's Club would qualify or how that is written to see if, in fact, that is doable or if it's something this council might want to consider changing in that manner, to put that, a group that was, is now no longer in service, but had a great effect on us getting to where we are today. I'm thinking that maybe in the historical stuff that Janice Givens had put together for us, we might find a list of the original founders. But yes, I do remember that it was Mrs. Dries and Miss, and Diane Bollinger, I think, was part of it. There's a whole list of women that were outstanding in our community that made up that body that were instrumental in getting a lot of things done here in our city. So I would just like more information about that on what we can do. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if the council. I just have two things. Ray, there was a couple of us council members here, Mayor Potem and myself, were on the phone and they wouldn't take our questions. So I thought that was kind of shady, you know, I don't trust about running away. And then maybe we can have Public Works or maybe, should we imagine about the weeds and the, whatever Deana called them, I call them little arrow. Rose.
Yes, when it comes to the parkways, we respond to complaints, we're not proactive with the council, council wanted to change that policy, you can certainly look at that, there are numerous parkways that are maintained throughout the city, we respond to them and MSD looks into that and asks the property owners to move it down. But the, the private, the parkways in front of the residential are maintained by the property owners.
And then the wall of distinction, I talked to you earlier about the five years we've got to wait for somebody on the wall, so maybe at the same time we revisit for the founding mothers, I'm gonna call them, the founding mothers of Longdale.
We can, sir, mayor, council, bring something back for revisiting and consideration to look at if you guys want to update that ordinance or regulations or policy.
That's it, that's it? Yeah. Madam Potem.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. As Councilmember Kearney mentioned, I was unable to attend in person at a last-minute doctor's appointment, but I was on the line and I did hear the comments and I appreciate those of you that showed up. Although it may not seem like you had an impact, you definitely did, otherwise I think they would have just blew through it completely. So I did think people are listening. And then I also agree with the sentiments regarding, looking at groups, and I think another great resource, with regards to the wall of distinction, and I think another great resource would be former councilmember Jim Osborne. I know he even had, I believe, actual booklets and pamphlets for the Women's Club and a lot of articles, which I think he donated, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm, I'm sure he would have some good information with regards to the names and whatnot. But I do definitely agree, we've had a lot of great service groups that are no longer active and, and so I think that those groups were definitely instrumental in, in getting a lot of things done in the city. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight and those who had opportunity to speak tonight as well. Yes, Ray, I was also there at the, at the meeting, the metro meeting, I want to thank everyone who, who took the time out of their day. A lot of folks had to take time off of work to go to the metro meeting and I do appreciate that because of the importance of the decisions that was made. You're absolutely right, Madam Potem, the fact that we were there and that we were engaged, it could have went a lot differently, especially in terms of the hybrid, the hybrid option and the motion that was put on the table by Mayor James Butt, which calls for further study of not just the, the hybrid row, but also Hawthorne Boulevard. And it gets into what we said before, the NEPA, NEPA analysis, which is a greater threshold analysis than what is provided for in SEQA. And one of the, the elements of NEPA, of course, is the economic impact of the communities, which is, is not required under SEQA. So the, the fact that they're gonna look at those options even, even greater and, and also incorporate a NEPA, because yes, there're gonna be some, I, I couldn't even imagine, no one has said you could do this project without any federal dollars, it's, it's not gonna happen. And so that would require a greater analysis and a NEPA analysis as well. So I'm glad at least we're able to have a NEPA analysis that we, we didn't have at first. And that, one of the things that came out of the meeting, so I want to thank once again everyone who made it to the meeting, we still have a ways to go and we'll continue to be vigilant on this issue. Madam Librarian, thank you for, once again, for being here, as always, to let us know all the good things that's happening at the library. I want to emphasize, of course, you, you mentioned the free lunch program, thank you for the free lunch program. That's really important because, as you know, as we all can appreciate, there's a lot of families who depend on lunch programs through the schools. And often throughout the summer, these families are in struggle to feed their childrens. So for you to provide that service is commendable, so I want to thank you for that free lunch, lunch program and we'll do our best to promote it. Deana, thank you for giving all the, the good comments about our Public Works Department. Yes, they do, where are you? Yes, they do tremendous work, I just don't have my glasses on. They do tremendous, tremendous work, so thank you for recognizing their, their hard work in the department. And you talk about the, the fox tails. Yeah, I didn't know what they were called, but you, you just gave me the definition of what they're called. So yes, there is a lot of parkways that need, need, that the weed abated and curbed. I'm thinking maybe, I know we, we do proactive. So yes, there is a lot of parkways that need, need, that the weeds abated and curbed. I'm thinking maybe, I know we do proactive. I mean, not proactive, we do it based on complaint-driven. I like to say complaint-driven, but complaint-driven. But maybe we can do, have a, have a time where it's, where we are doing it proactively, like, like periods. Right? Like maybe there's a quote-unquote season, right, where for a while we do proactive, then it goes back to, you know, where it's reactive. Because sometimes people are, they're reluctant to, to call it in. Because if you have something that's going on, let's say, in the weeds. I mean, somebody, anyone can call it in, right? But more than likely, it's probably gonna be your neighbor. And so that may, maybe, neighbor may be reluctant to call it in, because they don't want any problems. Nobody want any problems. They want to live in peace or whatever. So I think a periodic, you know, a proactive, you know, program would be in order. It doesn't have to be a day-to-day thing, but periodically, that's something we could look into. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And with that, oh yeah, we talked about the wall of distinction. I agree with that as well. And with that, I'll close public comments. And comments by the council members, and bring it back to our agenda. We are now on the consent calendar, items three through eleven. What is the pleasure of this body?
Well, there's additional instructions. I make a motion as well. Give some time, ready?
I'll second.
So a good move by Pat Kearney that we approved the consent calendar as is, and second by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, CNN, with the clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Potem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cuevas? Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes again this week, but Councilmember Pelo, absent.
Thank you. Okay, item number twelve, City Council Successor Agency Lawndale, House and Authority Annual Budget, Fiscal Budget.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. Okay, so we have the fiscal budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. We've kind of already had, you know, budget subcommittee meeting, council budget workshop a couple of meetings ago. Pretty much discussed all of those. We took all those suggestions and recommendations from council and combined it, combined into the final budget. We can get into numbers, starting with the general fund, fund balances, estimated to start the year, next year at thirty million, seven oh four, four seventy-nine. Revenues, expenses, and then ending with thirty-one, seven fifty, five oh six. So it's a little bit of a surplus for the year, which is always good. Getting into kind of the general fund revenues, if you can see, just in general, you know, taxes are the big piece of our revenue. Eighty-three percent of revenues come from taxes. Then we have some other smaller items, you know, community development, use of money, which is interest income, court fees, licenses and permits. They're all pretty minor, so taxes are the big ones. So gonna cover kind of the breakdown of taxes. Or all revenues, basically. This is kind of the breakdown of all the revenues. Taxes at seventeen million out of the twenty-one million for the year. You'll see that the side, the variance in total were about one point five million better than last year. And this pretty much due to kind of where the economy is at, with inflation being pretty high still and continuing to be high. And also the other use of money, which is our interest income, increase of about six hundred eighty-eight thousand. We are in a high-rate interest economy right now. We're doing very well there. So we do have increased interest income as well. And then, so getting into tax revenue breakdown, since this is our biggest piece, we have up top measure L, which is our city sales tax add-on. Estimated to come in at two point nine million, motor vehicle in lieu of property tax. Basically, it's a component of property tax for the city, four point eight million. The increase there is basically just our two percent year-over-year increase in property tax values, which is the max for, under Prop thirteen, I believe. And then we have sales tax, three point nine million, increase of about a hundred and three thousand. We get these numbers from HDL. They help us forecast this, and they're forecasting about a two percent increase in revenues for next year, meaning that sales are continuing to rise. Inflation does factor into that as well. But overall, they're predicting sales to continue to rise. Transit occupancy tax, occupancy tax, the TOT, this is our, on the hotels. Hotels have been doing pretty well lately. You'll see there's a good increase there, a hundred and twenty-four thousand increase compared to last year. So they continue to do well. I believe, again, inflation plays into that, increased nightly rates and continues to help with that. Property tax increases about two percent. UUTs, it's a little bit of an increase. Inflation, again, affects that, because as those rates go up, the tax on that goes up as well. And other sources, it's pretty minor, and those we're budgeting to remain the same. So in total, we have seventeen point three million compared to sixteen point six million from the prior year, which is almost a million-dollar increase in revenues compared to last year. Any questions on revenues before I get into expenditures? If not, I'll move on. Okay, so we have general fund expenditures, and basically, there's three components. We have personnel, operations, capital. Personnel is about thirty percent, operations sixty-five percent, and capital five percent. This is our breakdown of personnel costs by department. You can see all the different departments, the increases and decreases. In total, we're at six million compared to five point one million from last year, an increase of about nine hundred eleven thousand. And some of the reasons for this, as you know, previously discussed, there is a new MOU and CMT salaries were adjusted, as well as additional benefits, increase in benefit, medic, healthcare. Cable TV has a, the supervisor position is now filled. There's gonna be an emergency preparedness officer for municipal services that's been budgeted for. It's a part-time position. Community development, be adding a associate planner. And then, community services, for the reopening of rental for the community center, we have in the budget seven part-time employees. The prior director recommended that we do, we have seven to have it open for seventy-five percent. So we put in seven, but I believe the consensus with the subcommittee and the council was to start with four right now, and then increase to seven, or kind of see how it goes. So the budget has seven, but the, I guess the direction is to start with four for right now. But the seven is in there if need be for future, so that we don't have to go back and forth with getting the budget council approvals. One more thing I want to add on here. The total increase of nine hundred eleven thousand, the only thing changed from the last workshop to now, last workshop, the increase was about eight hundred and forty or eight hundred and fifty thousand. So there's like a fifty or sixty thousand increase. And that's basically the reallocation of some payroll personnel costs from successor agency back into general fund. Successor, we were charging a little bit too much there. And looking at it again, it was recommended to bring down those percentages, so that general fund takes that hit. This was also brought up when we took the ROPS to the DOF for approval. They recommended we lower that rate because the activity is reduced quite a bit right now. So I think it's more in line with the activity that's going on there. And so that's why the increase is a little bit more than at the budget workshop. That pretty much covers personnel. Moving on to operations, operating costs, just the expense. We're at thirteen point four million compared to thirteen million for last year, increase of four hundred and forty-four thousand. There's increases all throughout. There's a couple, there's one big small, one big decrease as well in there for operations. A couple of items to note. The city clerks department increased about seventy thousand due to the election that's gonna be in November. This, this has actually been reduced. We had a estimate of about ninety, ninety-five thousand during the workshop. I think in confirming with the county, their calculations changed a little bit, or how it was done. So that came down to seventy thousand increase, or that's what the election will cost the city. Another increase, major increase we have is insurance from the JPIA, and also Pers contributions for retirement benefits. Those had pretty big increases as well. And then the sheriff contract increase of about little over three percent, which translates to about two hundred and fifty thousand for the year. And then also, public works, this is the same as before. There's a need to have a HVAC technician to kind of monitor the HVAC system in the community center, just to make sure it continues to operate. We don't have any breakdowns or anything like that happening. So those are kind of the major causes for the increase. One more thing I do want to note is the attorney fee, the attorney's hourly fee increased by three point one percent, but there is no increase in the overall budget for that department. It stays the same, but their hourly fee did go up. Any questions before I move on to CIP, I guess?
Mayor, council, one to add on the ROPS, just so you can be more clear. Last time we went to the oversight board, they questioned the amount of our administrative costs. So working with the oversight board, my request is on, we promised the following year we'd look at it and adjust it down, so that's basically.
All right. So here we have our CIP budget. Top line is general fund items. It's basically the three eighty-four and five sixty moving across to eighty-four. This is the general fund required match for the SB one funds, which is several lines lower. SB one is a gas tax that was added a couple of years ago. There's a required maintenance of effort from general fund, so that's the match on there. Everything else is funded through, you know, the different prop monies, the different grants. So for a total, we have a carryover of about thirteen point eight million, and then twenty-four, twenty-five has another twelve million. There are some new items we have in there, just to name a few. The Hawthorne Boulevard project, that's new about, in total, it's about a three million dollar project. It's gonna last a few years. This is at the end of the packet, the, in the, the big packet, in the staff report. That has the CIP project details in there if you wanted to.
You said it's not on here?
It's in the big packet you have in the binders, probably. So there's a Hawthorne project, and we're starting off with some ARPA money to pay for that, Measure M and some gas tax. It's about a three million dollars, gonna couple you, two, three years, I guess, is the timeline on that. A lot of the street projects, those are just carryovers from prior year. They're, and those use CDBG money, the Measure R, Measure M, basically to fund for those. We have some slurry seal, which is new for this year. And then, you know, the continued annual street improvements, every year, we put aside some money for that. Another big one is, it's dark, I can't see. The park irrigation, that's about a million dollars. That's for the three parks. Rogers, Jane Adams, and Green. A million dollars that's gonna come funded from ARPA funds as well. And then we have a project that's a couple of years out. It's a recycled water infrastructure. Right now, that's unfunded, but it is on there. It's not really scheduled until twenty-five, twenty-six, but we did feel it just needs to be on there, just to show there's a plan for that. But is currently unfunded, meaning we, we're not sure where their funding's gonna come from, but as we get closer, we'll look into that. Probably general fund, or see what other grant money there is available out there, what we can use. And then there's some catch-based and retrofit. I think those are the major ones. And then there's also, I mean, obviously, the biggest one, you see like the four million dollar, there's two four million dollars up there. Measure A has one point one million, and then there's LPBP grant, two million. These are all for the youth development center. I believe it's about eight or nine million or a little more, but that's what we've got on there for right now. Any questions on CIP?
You said Measure A and, who was the other one? For the youth development center?
Youth Development Center has, yes, Measure A, the LPBP grant. There's a CNRA grant, which is four million, and then the federal grant, which is through HUD, it's another four million.
So that's three. Three sources, right?
Uh, four.
Oh, I got, I got three.
Three, actually. The LPBP is for something else. So three sources, correct? Moving on, next we have community events. These are pretty much the same as last year. Some slight increases, just because costs are more, inflation's hitting. The one new one is the last one that's on there is a Youth in Government Day. Three thousand dollars for that one. That's a new program that was discussed and approved by council last time, so that's been added as well. And then, unknown or potential costs. There is, I guess, still the possibility of the Metro Green Line litigation. There's gonna be upcoming negotiations on the MOU again coming up, I believe, later this year. And then, the other thing is, we are in a high-interest rate environment. There's always talks of rates being cut, so that could obviously affect it. Currently, based on how inflation is going, the most recent numbers that came out, and what the Fed is saying, it doesn't seem like there's gonna be rate cuts, but obviously, with election uncertainty and everything, anything can happen, basically. But for right now, you know, we're doing fairly well, and the interest rates do remain high. And then sales tax, if, you know, the economy is projected two percent increase on that. It seems like that will, that will, you know, projections seem good. If anything does change, obviously, that's one of our biggest sources of revenue, so that would take a hit. But for right now, everything seems to be okay. And then finally, just to go over some ARPA items, that's in the budget. Just some of the bigger items. The city clerk does have agenda management software scheduled. Public Safety has some equipment for the Sheriff Department. There's radar trailers, a light camera repair, awning for the safety center. Municipal Services has ARPA for replacement vehicle. And then also, the citywide armed security is being funded through ARPA. And then in Public Works, there's some remaining security improvements, replacing the CNG pickup trucks, City Hall facility needs, there's the Hopper Park shade equipment, and the power washer that are scheduled for ARPA funding. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there, are there any questions in the report?
So you're pretty sure, or are you entrenched sure? You said you're pretty sure about the numbers?
The numbers, oh, these numbers are good.
Okay, okay.
These numbers are good.
Okay, okay.
As, as of today.
As of today.
But are you entrenched sure? Yeah, we're good.
Very good.
These numbers are good.
My observations are, there's a couple of observations. You mentioned, this is under the transit occupancy tax.
Yep.
There's a two percent, how was that? I wrote twenty. You said two, though, right? You said a two percent increase out of twenty. I wrote twenty percent, but I think you might have said two.
On the transit occupancy tax? I don't have the percentage with me, but that's, it's more than two percent. That's the hotel.
Maybe it was twenty, maybe you said twenty.
Two percent is for property taxes.
Okay.
That's our gen, that's the cap for California. But the TOT is just based off of the nightly stays and the hotel revenues.
Well, it said it was an increase, so this, this whole, this is actually good news to let you know we have a hotel.
Yeah.
Yes, hope to come online soon. I'm here in Lawndale, of course, with the increase of about twenty percent, yeah, about twenty percent of tax revenue derived from the transit occupancy tax.
Yeah.
That would be good news for those hotels. So that's good news. Um, you mentioned that we have approximately a million dollars increase in revenue?
Yeah, in total, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Nine hundred and seventy-one, but we don't round it up to a billion. Right, that's, that's good news right there. Anytime you're not in a deficit, that's good news. I did have one question, um, about the, um, under the general fund personnel, personnel costs. With the, um, addition of employees for the, the, the community center, the Hopper Center. Um, you said that you budgeting for four.
Budgeting for seven.
We're gonna start with four.
Let's start with four.
But you budgeting for seven.
Yeah, that's.
So we don't, if we need seven, we don't have to come back because.
Exactly. That was a direction from last time in the council meeting, yes.
And, and why, why do we wanna start with four if we budgeting for seven?
That was kind of recommendation from the subcommittee, just to not over hire, I guess, and make sure it is a successful program and, um, probably may, and I think the, uh, worry of not even being able to hire that many out right now.
And refresh my memory, what, what was four?
The four of right now.
Do fours.
So Mayor, Mayor Council, the, it was, the idea was the council was interested in opening operations fully for Friday and Saturday, and talking about reservations too. So we're looking at that and see if we get four more. The former director of C D, C S D, he recommended seven. But he thought he could do it with four to, to get back to the reservation level and programming on Saturdays. Yeah, that, we've been getting a lot of calls from interested parties for reservations to the council, so we wanna try to accommodate that as best we can. But, uh, the subcommittee recommended doing an incremental approach, is what we're trying. And then, um, hopefully we get to fuller operations to where Sunday and Saturday, there's reservations and some programming. There never was programming on Sundays. It was reservations, but there was programming and reservations on Saturdays.
Just making sure that we can reach out objectively with the fours, but it seemed like we couldn't reach it with the fours, so that's, that's good. Uh, let's see, I think that's the only, I noted the youth center funding, and happy to see that. That's all the observations I have. Anyone else, anything they wanna add?
I just wanna thank staff. I wanna thank Councilmember Kearney.
And.
Did you say, did you say yourself?
Okay, well, I can say.
I'll give you a parent a back later.
On the subcommittee?
That was my first time, so very insightful, and I know a lot of work goes into this, um, but if there's no further questions or concerns, I'll make my decision.
Let's see if there's any further questions or concerns. Did you have?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, oh, what's your next?
To approve the budget.
Okay, so the motion is made by, as far as.
I'm not gonna.
Okay, to, uh, approve the, um, annual budget for fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, and second by Councilmember Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the, Madam Clerk, would you give us the roll call?
Mayor Proton Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayleth, and Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Quayleth's assent.
Thank you. Okay. Alright, who wants to do item thirteen?
Oh, look, he's standing right there again. Are you entrenched sure?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Item thirteen, this is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five appropriations limit. Okay, so appropriations limit for fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five is forty-three million, fifty-two thousand, two ninety-six. Uh, budget that's subject to the limit is eighteen million, two thirty-five, seven hundred and thirty-five. So we have a remaining capacity of twenty-four million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. So we're, we are well within the appropriations limit, and, um, that concludes that report. Just looking for approval on this.
Okay, any discussion on this item? What is the, what is the?
Go ahead. After that, and I will go staff recommendation.
Josh seconded.
Okay, the motion been made by Kearney that we go with staff recommendation, and second by Hoffman-Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayleth, Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Quayleth's assent.
Thank you.
Oh, he's here again.
Madam Chair, I trust that you're gonna also do the annual investment.
Yes, that's mine as well. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, again. Um, this is the annual investment report, um, per hour code. Um, we update this, or I did review this. There were no changes. Um, everything on here still falls in line with the state code. Um, it is a very conservative policy for the city. Um, you know, the main goal being safeguarding of assets and, uh, hi, you know, the best return on yields that we can get. Um, and liquidity of funds. So all of those are built into this. There were no changes for this year, so we're just looking for approval on this item as well.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, discussion was a pleasure. This body concerned in this item.
Make a motion. Do I start the decision again?
Motion agreed made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we go with staff recommendation, and second by Madam Proton Torres. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, would you conduct the roll?
Mayor Proton Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayleth, Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Quayleth's assent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all those reports. Okay, item fifteen, notice of completion for the Prop A concrete bus pads. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, as council recalls, back in February, um, council awarded a construction contract to F S, um, contractors for the bus pad locations and, um, and related improvements citywide at twelve locations, uh, which are funded by Prop A. So, uh, in short, the construction started on March fourteenth and completed on April twelve. Everything was, uh, in accordance to the plans and specifications. Um, I'm happy to report to you that, um, we, uh, finished the project under the budget and on schedule. And, uh, the, the numbers are noted in your staff report. The contract amount was three hundred and nineteen thousand and some change. And the contingencies were sixty-three thousand, total three hundred and eighty-two thousand, project completed three twenty-four. So tonight, uh, we are requesting the city council to accept the project performed by F S contractors. Authorize the staff to file the notice of completion with, uh, County of Los Angeles. And authorize the staff to, uh, release the detention in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents for this project. And that concludes my staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions in the staff report? Seeing none was a pleasure. This body concerned with this item.
I should motion to accept the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Pat Kearney that we accept staff recommendation, and second by Hoffman-Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, would you, uh, do the vote, please?
Mayor Proton Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayleth, Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Quayleth's assent.
Thank you, sir. Next item is, so you kinda just report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be quick. I just wanna thank staff, uh, for all the help, and the council, subcommittee, and council for the support, uh, regarding the budget. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a big task, a big haul, and I wanna thank staff again, all the departments, and staff for coming together to put the budget together, and getting it on time and a balanced budget. The other item I wanted to discuss was the Green Line with the Metro. It was a last minute. I wanted to point out to the community that we were noticed not directly. We got it, you know, it came in last minute, that item on the agenda. Um, we are, you know, doing all we can to look into what Metro, uh, and their, the project and which way it's going. Um, obviously, you know, I have been stating for many, many years that they, this needs to be a NEPA and slash SEQA document. It looks like, based on the motion from, uh, Mayor Butts, uh, Director Butts on the Metro, it looks like they're looking at that. We did with the help of the Finance Department, did dig into their books and their auditor, and we discovered that, uh, they are not meeting their re, the Measure M funds are not coming in as, as, um, they thought, had hoped. I know, uh, Madam Mayor Proten had mentioned that on the cog, that those mon, the monies are just not coming in. Whatever position they take, or whatever row they decide to go in the row or half arm, uh, they, they're underfunded. So as of right now, and as time goes on, costs increase, so we'll keep an eye at, we are bird dogging that project. I wanna show the residents. And those of us who will go on turn, and we will pursue every angle, uh, to, uh, clarify Longdale's position with regard to the Green Line, and ensure that project is fully mitigated. And that concludes my comment. Oh, one other thing, the health and pet fair is coming up this Saturday. I will bring my little nephews, like, one and a half, so hopefully, uh, he.
I thought you didn't get them vaccinated or something.
Um, and I will bring in, my wife is bringing in the grandkids.
You're good.
Yes.
Thank you for that report. So you'll be well behaved, I think.
Yeah, I doubt that.
The wife and the grandkids would be there. Thank you for that report. Let's, let's see if the councilwoman, Hoffman-Gorman.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make it perfectly clear. I did also attend the Metro meeting as a resident only, since I cannot do that in my capacity as being a, a, an elected official. Also, I did attend the mayor's fantastic pancake breakfast. Good job, mayor, good job, fire department, and Station Twenty-One on putting that out. Really nice event, enjoyed by everyone. And I also attended the Memorial Day celebration, not celebration, but remembrance here at City Hall. Those are the things that I did do. Now, I just had a couple of questions, and my questions will be this. First off, for our city manager, can you give us a brief update on what's going on with our project of the license readers? And also, how is the construction over at our council chambers going on?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Mr. Reyes will, uh, if he could get up and answer the question on the license plates readers. I know we, I knew he was anticipating that question.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with us this evening. Uh, the only hiccups, the cameras have arrived. We've had them in our possession for a number of weeks now. Um, the poles that they're gonna go on to belong to the county and to a neighboring city. So we need to get permits from those cities in order to put the cameras up, and that's the only delay right now is having our contractor get those permits secured so we can begin construction, or begin installation of the cameras. But we do have them. We've had them for a, a number of days now.
Alright, that's, that's good to know, and I appreciate you updating us, and I will probably be asking again in a month or so to see where we are.
Yes, and, and we, we are checking with our starch as well to make sure that, that our contractors doing what he needs to do to get those done.
While you're standing up here, I just, in the, watching the, the amount of people that come through here that are taking the classes. I got to thinking about the neighborhood watch meeting. Is there any way we could put an advertisement, a large advertisement up here on the second floor where the parents are accumulating? I, I was sitting here thinking, this, this is kinda abstract. Back in the day, we would send flyers to the school district, and the kids would take them home. But we no longer do those kind of things. And I thought, well, maybe we need to have some flyers that the teachers hand to the student to get to the home. Or put something large here on this floor where we're having those people come in and out.
Well, the, the, the city council very graciously just granted us some money for, uh, having those meetings, so we can certainly use some for, for signage.
Just an idea, just to get the words out. I thought about on Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, making a banner that you could change monthly. You know, where you could just redo the date, the way Mike used to have reusable banners, but he could just change the date. I thought about that idea too. I'm just wanting the word out to our residents that.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and we do currently, uh, do, do, we do notify the school district with flyers so that they're aware of the neighborhood watch meetings.
Right, so that they could post it on their website, or however it is that they advertise.
So we do wanna advertise, and we do plan to connect with everyone that attended the last one through emails and phone calls, so they can attend again. We do wanna get that momentum continued for, for those meetings.
Yes, that's, that's what I'd like to see. I, I just wanna see us double and double and double again. You know, the old commercial, and they told two friends, and so on and so on.
Yeah, and I'd like to see those numbers increase as well. I was gonna say just.
We did great.
It was good. I was very pleased with it, and I think the sheriffs were in the community as well. So yes, we, we definitely wanna promote it further. And then I, if I could piggyback on Sean, uh, one five, one one four, Fremona, Jane Adams Park, uh, from ten to two, uh, health and safety and pet fair.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Please everyone attend. It's, uh, for everyone to enjoy.
Yes, always a great event. I do have one last thing.
Um, Mayor, Council, Raylet was gonna come up and a- answer the question for your second question on the council chambers.
Oh, okay. Good. Raylet, I just can't see you over there.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The project is progressing. Um, we are on target to still be able to complete. We will still need to be in here again, um, next council meeting on the seventeenth, but we hope to be back in July.
Great, glad to hear that. Thank you. One last thing that I would like to bring up. Is there any way that we can do some research here at the city and explore the opportunity for possibly having a lobbyist onboard? And this is coming because I just learned in May that there was some money and some grants available. And we missed out, and some cities got two and three different things filled that they were able. And I'm sure that Longdale could appreciate getting those kind of monies, and I think the missing piece is possibly having a lobbyist that looks out on our behabings on things like that.
We, I could certainly, Mayor Council, we can bring something for consideration, and put it on the next agenda, or the following agenda. We can look into that for you.
I would appreciate some, I, I just feel like we have a missing piece and an opportunity that we could do more in our community if we knew about it. And if we could, um, stay abreast of, of what's available better. Thank you.
Yep?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Yes, sir.
Probably gonna go backwards.
Continue on this course.
Okay.
We went down the wrong street. We might as well continue.
Okay, cuz it was in, it was in our agenda twice.
Then we make a U-turn.
Yeah.
And, uh, we said items.
Okay, uh, I attended the L A County Peace Officers Memorial, and Bishop's Church Center in East L A. It was well received. I met the family of the fallen officer in Manhattan Beach. They, and they were in tears, but it's a great event. I'm sorry, more of my council members couldn't make it. I know they're busy. Uh, I attended the Metro Board meeting on call-in. Like I said, they wouldn't take my call or Mayor Proten's call. Uh, I attended the Pancake Breakfast there, and local ten fourteen, and our firefighters at Station Twenty-One. Uh, I had sausage. I don't must give a pancake, but I know your grandkids are loving it, Sean. And then I attended on the Memorial Day Remembrance. It was well received. The major, got a couple of times choked up on stage. Uh, I attended a final, a final academy meeting, L A County Sheriff's Contract City Council Academy Session Number Four at the, I think. Uh, we call it TAS Center, a unit in East L A where Councilwoman, uh, Quayleth and I graduated. And will be given diplomas by Sheriff Luna in the August, uh, Conference of these, media.
Wow.
And one more thing, I wanna give a big shout out to a member of our audience, Jared. You nail the people at Me- at Metro. Uh, I was very proud of you, young Jedi. You, you finally got your big girl's wife, and you went up there, and you hammered him. But, so I'm a shout out, kudos to you.
We had some really good speakers on Longdale's behalf.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Proton, it's for you.
Uh, just a couple. I did attend the South Bay City Council Government Board of Directors meeting. Um, there's an opportunity for L A County rent relief for landlords, uh, who qualify. Um, and I believe the deadline is tomorrow, so just a last minute, um, blurb about it, L A County Rent Relief dot com. Um, and then I did attend also, um, the Memorial Day Remembrance event. And I, I did speak with the city manager, but I wanted to check and see if we're actually updating that wall. Um, I'm hoping there's no names to put on there, but in the event that there are, if we could just check and make sure that, I, I, I'm not quite sure of the process for updating it.
Yeah, yes, uh, Mayor, Madam Pro, um, Mayor Proten, we, I checked with staff. It has, it's been updated since the last, uh, name was added. But, uh, we can definitely, I did check with Diane. She did do research in, into the matter and then look into it, and, um, but we could, we're still looking into it further.
Perfect. I don't know how often we do that, but, um, if, if we could just remember to keep that busy. Um, and that's it.
Thank you. So um I did attend, of course, uh the Metro Board meeting as stated a little earlier, and I too want to congratulate Jared, he did a outstanding outstanding job. Did you hear, you saw all the hands that was waving like that, that means they were cheering you on, you couldn't hear them, but that means they were cheering you on. And so that was, that was, that was great, thank you for that. Uh my other two representatives, they always do a great, great job, our attorney and as well as our city manager, who um played our case in front of the board, so thank you as well. Um thank everyone once again for coming out to the pancake uh breakfast and firefighters on local ten fourteen, for Station Twenty-One, that was great. Thanks to my colleagues for for joining us, those who was able to, I appreciate that. Um I attended Memorial Day Ceremony, great ceremony this year. Um as always, it was great ceremony, but we we plowed through it, made made it happen. And we had a ni- a nice turnout, the weather was pretty decent too. It's usually kind of blazing at, you know, some point where we, at some point, usually we have like a race against the sun, right? Before the sun, before it gets too hot. But it was on great weather and um a great um ceremony and remembrance, I want to thank everyone who participated um in that uh remembrance, and those who came out to uh remember the uh our fallen soldiers uh with us. Uh also an opportunity to attend the ceremonies, Memorial Day Ceremony in the City of Hawthorne, as well as the City of Inglewood. Their cer- ceremonies as well. I have one item I want to ask the 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 city manager, although we talked about this and I don't know the answer, but the public might be interested in um what's those lights and stuff at um the Seventy-Eleven parking lot on Artesia in Manhattan Beach? That looks like the new war order has arrived.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh and the sheriff, the Sergeant Smith is aware of, the property owner there has had a lot of issues, graffiti, gangs, um we've had, unfortunately, we had drug dealing going on, um drug sales at one of the retail outlets. Uh we've had issues in there, so the property owner has been fed up, and so she's been trying to do all she can to mitigate the issues out on the site. Uh we have, the sheriffs have been very responsive out there, staff go out there as well, MSD. Um but they decided to move forward with these portable type cameras they put out on the property um and install them, it's monitored twenty-four-seven. However, uh last week we had an issue with uh a person that was camping on the property and I guess their their new system was not working, it was not monitored properly. We have recommended to the property owner to get twenty-four hour security, which is needed because it's a nice, big, large site with above uh roof parking, and so people take advantage of it, and it's just not locked off, it's very open, alley access. And it it entertains and holds a lot of our nice businesses right on our border there, but also attracts some nuisance uh problems in the elevators, um and to mention that the, there's a um community of a homeless shelter, not not too far nearby on the Redondo Beach side. And some of those folks come over there and and panhandle and then hang out there and on the property. So the property owner is doing all she, all they can, it's owned by a brother and sister, and they're doing all they can to mitigate the issues there.
Okay, and we'll, we'll continue to work with them to um make sure that area is is safe, clean for the residents and for the patrons. Now, thank you for that. Um I wanted to add one one other item, oh, the the owner, she did take the opportunity, I spoke with her, she took the opportunity to praise our graffiti team about graffiti removal, she's very well pleased. Um as you know, that um that strip mall was hit by graffiti a lot. They have a, an area that's kind of hidden, you know, and that that area is hitting, hit by graffiti a lot, but she really wanted to give kudos to our graffiti um team, we know it's private property, um but when you have graffiti, especially these gang type graffiti, it becomes a public um public safety issue more than just a a private, you know, uh issue or heavy. So she wanted to send her um kudos to the um our graffiti, public work staff for abating as much as possible on the graffiti um in that area, not just, not just the the actual mall itself but along that walkway, for some reason people decide, what's that, that bus structure is still there for some reason? I don't think there's a bus stop. I don't think there's been a bus stopped there for years, but the structure is still there, whatever. And now people hit that up a lot, and so the the team is out there a lot, just abating that graffiti, and so she just wanted to appreciate that. So I wanted to pass that along. Okay, with that, we finish on public, I mean comments from the council, from the Mayor and Council, but we're gonna um make a U-turn. Right, because we went down the wrong street, we're gonna make a U-turn and we're gonna pick up item sixteen, which we are gonna defer to another uh meeting, so we're gonna remove item sixteen from the agenda. But we will continue with item seventeen. And this is consideration of the formation of a local travel network project at HOP Subcommittee. That's our oral report. Who wants to give their report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'll I'll go ahead and give it. Um the, as you know, the cog graciously came over and gave us a presentation on the on the local travel network that they've been in works for a couple of years. Um the city has worked on numerous iterations of bike paths and whatnot throughout the city. Um we we have an adopted Bike Master Bike Plan, we also have our general plan update that recently includes that as well. Um the uh Madam Mayor Protem had motioned to uh form a subcommittee to help staff develop this plan and bring it forward, and that's what's before you today, is consideration of forming a subcommittee regarding the site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the their report.
And I just want to clarify, the ADHOP, there's no actually decisions being made, this will come before the entire board. Um there won't be, and and again to reiterate, that it's not using any city funds. Um this is just to explore and then give a final recommendation to the council. So I'd like to volunteer myself and then any of my guys.
I'd like to volunteer myself.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint you, here to to Kearney. To the, now that you both have volunteered. Is there any dis- let's have any discussion, any more discussion on this, because I agree, this is so you guys can flush it out, the issue and bring it.
Yeah, we'll bring it to a tree.
Okay? Okay, so let's make that a motion, let's make the motion um a motion, let's make the motion so it's clear to uh to ratify the mayor's appointment of Suarez and Pat Kearney. And it was made by.
Do I need to second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can second.
Okay, I can second it.
There you go. There you go. It's all worked out. Then then we'll vote now that we got a second. Okay, um Madam City Clerk, please take the roll call, please. Madam. It's a long night.
Uh Mayor Proton Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Yes.
Councilmember Quivers? Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Quivers' assent.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, did we do it? We did it all, we did eighteen, okay. Okay, so now it's time to adjourn.
I'm gonna wait until before we say, on the seventeenth, I will not be available, I'll be in Oregon for my granddaughter's graduation in college.
Oh, seventeen, okay, the graduation. Okay, we'll sign you to another ADHOP committee while you.
Okay, yeah.
How about that?
Coffee, tea, whatever.
Because the next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council will be held at six-thirty P.M. on Monday, June seventeen, twenty twenty-four, at the Pearl E. Hoffman Committee Center, second floor. Long Island, California.
Go on second floor.
Yeah, on the same floor. Long Island, California, it has the whole Long Island, California.
Nine oh two six oh.
Like I didn't know that. It is now I'm eighteen and we are doing.
Yeah, we're having a Longdale Council meeting in Hawthorne.
Right, right.